But what was great is his staff, um, which I did as a day employee, both of them come from France, family, and we're sharing through the country.
Without really having the, the family tradition in her own family, she began to take, um, uh, classes to take her first communion. And she became a Catholic as a seven-year-old, almost on her own. Uh, and my parents, uh, met, met at a Catholic church and a young adult group. Uh, and they got married and they raised us, five kids, um, all as Catholics. And we were not only raised Catholic, but educated Catholic, uh, as well, all going through parochial schools. So that's informed, uh, a lot of, um, certainly my commitment to family, uh, and to, and to service is always having, um, having faith as a, as a guidepost and a, a center of our values. Now it's also our, in our, the Catholic tradition where you're baptized as a baby, uh, and you're confirmed, you know, as a 12-year-old. So not even an adult kind of making your own decisions about the faith. Um, and so I think it's a challenge for us as adults to commit to, to the values, um, of, of our faith tradition. Uh, now you mentioned the last two years. Now I may say something now that may surprise you. But my faith has been more of a struggle in the last two years than I, um, say in other parts of my life. For a couple of reasons, um, because we are separate as, as state and church. Um, and we've had some, we've had some legal battles and otherwise, uh, with, with faith, um, institutions. My own especially. Uh, so that has given, uh, me some pause. Uh, I've seen a lot of good people, done the right thing, succumbed to this wicked virus. That's caused me to have some questions about why us, why me, why my family, why my sister? For example. So that's in itself has, has been, um, a struggle too. But in the midst of, you know, all of, you know, these questions, I was blessed to adopt a little girl. She's now three years old. Um, and I also had the decision as an adult, very much an adult, to decide, if I'm committed to my Catholic values and am I going to commit my daughter, uh, as a baby, um, to these values? And I was very proud, uh, to, to have her adopted and look forward to raising her. Um, and recognizing, and this is the conversation that sometimes we have with ourselves. I may disagree with this, with the present course of some things that are happening in the church, but this is my church. And, uh, it's my responsibility to make it the church, um, that it needs to be for, for me, uh, and my family. So, uh, my, that's a long answer to your question, but the anatomy of my faith is kind of really deep-seated in my family, um, and our commitment to values. The last thing I'll say on this point about church and state, as I thought about our discussion, is while I may not bring Catholic doctrine, uh, to what I do as a, as a leader, I do emphasize values in what we do. Uh, and that is what our faith has taught us, a commitment to values and no matter what, using those pillars as pivot points or landing spots, no matter what the issue is, to go back to values. And if I look back on the last, I would say four or five years, that has been something that DC residents have embraced so strongly, is that we have a value as a community. Some is religious, or is it diversity, or is it sustainability, or is it equality of opportunity? All of those are values that are so deep-seated in our culture and go across all faiths. Um, and that, that commitment to our values as DC residents or DC values, um, has made me very proud.
Well, thank you.
Well, um, that's a pretty tough act to follow. Um, let me just say, can I just make, take a moment of personal privilege, as I like to say?
Sure.
Mayor, I have lived, uh, in the city for almost 40 years. So I have been a resident and I was thinking about this last night as Rabbi had asked us to do this. And I was thinking to myself, what you have been through the last couple of years is beyond anything I think people recognize. If you step back and say to yourself, you're, you're trying to manage a city with the most diverse population, both economically, politically, sensitivity. But then you look at that, you, you, you started the, you know, the period with the George Floyd death and murder. And you had to manage that effectively to the constituencies. And you did it with grace and dignity and, and never losing who you were. As you were trying to balance the need to keep businesses open and the community going and tax revenues going. And then you had the January 6th, which could have obviously just not only destroyed our democracy, potentially destroyed the city. And again, you stood not only through the use of your authorities, but as a, as a respected figure. And then, for all of us who are sitting here with masks, uh, in the temple, with, the COVID for us, and we are the lucky ones, we're all sitting here. Sadly, your sister is not. And you've had to wake up every day and figure out, you know, how are you going to get those vaccines to the people in, in a way that represents the city and the equalities of the city? So it's just not a bunch of us, who, or most of us who are white in a city who lives in Northwest and how you were to balance that. And I am just, I am proud that you're our mayor. Thank you very much. And, um, mazel tov on the baby. Um, uh, and, uh, Rabbi, listen, I, you know, you, um, you were really, really, really nice to my family. When my kids got bar, bar mitzvah, I was, you know, when you, when you were making the comments today about standing up for those, um, individuals who made Judaism, uh, work for their families. Um, you made my wife feel comfortable in this community. You made my kids.
I know what she has to live with.
Yeah, I do too. Uh, trust me, but it made that experience for my kids, bar, bar mitzvah, that much more special. Cause she was into it, okay? And you made her feel part of it. And so when I, if I am fortunate enough to get confirmed and I get to go to Israel, I will say without question, my official Rabbi is Rabbi Bruce Lustig. But my friend is Bruce Lustig, so thank you, uh, very much. I, listen, I, um, uh, you know, I grew up in Duluth, um, and, uh, it was cold there. And, uh, there was a very, just like Nashville, there wasn't a lot of Jews. Um, those of us who were Jewish were close, the community was close. Uh, we were reformed Jews. Um, I'm still a reformed Jew. Uh, for me, um, the, my faith was about a way of life. Um, being Jewish was just part of it. It was about, it was about community, it was about sadaka, it was about giving back. Listen, I, um, um, I, my sister's here with me today and my kids are watching on, I hope they're watching. Um, uh, I was testing them if they're not watching. Um, but I think the, the most, the thing that was ingrained in my mind as the youngest I've got, my, my father, um, had been quite successful in his earliest career. And he had me when he was 50 years old, which at the time was pretty unusual. Um, and about around 52, 53 years old, he basically lost all of his money. And, you know, and I, and I, and he really, he used to sit with me. We, he then had to become a salesman and we, and I used to go on a sales calls with him. I used to sit in the front seat of his Red Nova. And we'd drive around and he would sell, you know, insurance or mutual funds or whatever he was selling. And, and he turned to me and he'd look at me and said, how did I get myself into this? How, how did this happen to me? How did I be, how did I like, I don't have any money left, I have nothing. I mean, I'm, I'm, I gotta like make this, I got, I have seven kids, I have a big, how, I, how am I, how have I done this? And he never lost his faith. And he, not only did he not lose his faith, he basically always believed, as my mother did, they still had to give back, cause there was still someone who was worse off than we were, okay? And, and I think if I said to anything about giving back and getting involved and, and getting into the game. Listen, I, listen, I like being involved in politics. Um, I like getting into the game. It is rough and it is tumble and you can get beaten up. And this is going to be a real, this is gonna, this is a complicated assignment I'm about ready to take. And I am sure I will not be everyone's friend, cause you can't in these jobs. But you gotta get in the game, you gotta participate, you gotta like, want to make things just a little bit better. Someone asked me, what, what's my goal of being the ambassador? Well, I said, you know what? I'm somewhat of an incrementalist when it comes to this, but even if I can think, makes things just a little bit better, just a little bit better, then that's success. So I, my faith is about, um, my background, about being involved, but caring deeply about being, not only about being Jewish, about what Judaism for me stands for, which is about, um, the world of caring and giving.
But Tom, you also, uh, you know, your father faced his challenge and never gave up his faith, but that's your father. You've also, you lost a sister. Uh, you've had, uh, other things that have gone on and things that should, that shake the faith. How do you, how have you fortified that?
You know, um, you sort of never do. I, you know, my sister died at 60 years old, 61 years old, uh, pancreatic cancer. I mean, no one should die like that, no one should, your sister shouldn't die of COVID. I mean, come on. And, and I, and it's, you say, you know, you know, you know, um, you'll get over it, or, or your, your faith will get you past it. Uh, you know, it bums me out every day. I mean, it just, it's not fair. She was healthy one day and, and dead, you know, 14 months later. You know, um, my, uh, great pal, um, uh, John Shulman, his father-in-law and his brother-in-law are here today. And, you know, my pal has lost his whole fam, he's lost his, his two brothers. Just, my last brother just recently passed away a month and a half ago. He lost his parents. I mean, that's not fair. That's just terrible. It's, all it is is terrible. I, and so I guess I'm, I'm not, I can't tell you that it's, you know, faith has made me feel better. No, it's not fair. It should not have happened. And, and if anything, it rocked me a little bit to say, well, I know there's God out there, but that's not right. So I guess you have to get through it, you have to push forward and you just have to believe there's something out there that might make it better, but it's still really painful.
It is painful. And what, what I'm impressed about both of you and what to me is the thing that is, uh, incredibly, you know, it's the Jewish ethos in that sense is, is that, and I said this on the holidays, uh, on Rosh Hashanah, we are in a time that we're, you know, we're, by our thing, we say, who will live and who will die? You know, we're in this limbo thing for these next days. And by this afternoon at Ne'olah, either a name's signed or it's not signed. But it is by our actions that we change the decree. And both of you have turned what could be something that could crush either of you of losing a family member, facing things. And my God, I stood with you, Mayor, uh, Bowser, when, uh, there were people roaming the streets and beating up people. There were, there were things that were happening from 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue that, that we couldn't believe were coming out of the mouths of, uh, people that were elected officials. And what did you do? You called a group of us together and minister stood with you on 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. And you gave us hope and you sent a message to them, cause you painted the street and said, Black Lives Matter. And you initiated a sign on the corner that said, Black Lives Matter Square. And you were surrounded by ministers and priests and rabbis and everyone. And we all were there because, uh, in that moment, through service, you gave us hope. And how do you both churn that, uh, the opportunity of, you know, of something that could crush? And you both chose the life of service.
Well Rabbi, I, I wish I could tell you, um, that I, I would know what to do. I wish I could, but I, I was chosen to sit in the seat at this time and I'm glad that I was. Like Tom, I like to have the ball, I like to be in the game. I feel like.
We're glad you're in the game.
Make the right decisions for the most people. I would, people always ask me, what is your job as mayor? My job is to make the best decisions for the most people as fast as possible. Um, and that is what I always try to do. Um, people have asked me, um, many, many times about Black Lives Matter Plaza, as you might guess. Um, but really, I was with members of the Interfaith Council, um, and when I think I knew what had to happen. Um, and we were walking because the, uh, the, the, um, the pastor of St. John's couldn't get to the church.
Right.
Um, it was, it was completely blocked off. And I left my office at City Hall. We met a group, um, Pastor Bowen was with us, probably about a dozen of us, um, joined, um, that congregation and members and just walked down the street. And I realized, here I am, the mayor of Washington DC, this is my town. Not only my town, my father's town, my grandfather's town, my, you know, long ways. And we're walking down, I guess we were on K or I Street. And there were these people in all kinds of military garb. No names, no affiliations, as far as I could tell, no orders. Uh, like we didn't know who, they definitely weren't getting orders from me or from the chief of the Metropolitan Police Department. So who were they? Um, and here I stand with my constituents now, and I can't walk down the street. Um, so it was, became very clear that the first thing we had to do was take back our streets. Um, and the idea of doing it with art and doing it with peace, after all, I don't have an army. I don't have, you know, I have three or four thousand people for the Metropolitan Police Department. It turns out we did, uh, people who meant to do what was right. Um, and we had a, we had a job to do. We had to, first of all, declare our autonomy. After all, we're tax-paying Americans and this is our street. Uh, we also had to keep it safe. Uh, we had very hurt, angry people who are demonstrating as is their right. Um, and we had to make it safe for them and safe for our police officers, who also had the job to do to make sure that they could demonstrate safely without breaking the law. So all of those things, um, having, um, to come together right there. Uh, and I, I, I believe it was kind of God meant to happen. Um, just imagine having a, a mural commission installed overnight. Um, and that it worked, that it became the place where people could peacefully demonstrate and law enforcement could lawfully protect the city. Um, and so that, I, I know, um, the strength to do it. Cause believe me, it's not an easy thing to decide to do that in, in the, you know, in the president's face. But it, it was the only way, um, to make sure that an emboldened person who was really not making, it didn't seem to be logical, um, decisions, that somebody who loved our democracy or loved that church that they claimed or, um, loved the, the constitution. Those, those were not the actions, the logical actions of someone.
But the brilliance, the real brilliance of right outside of Pennsylvania Avenue, where that fence ended and he put up those barriers and everything to protect his little ivory tower, uh, in terms of, right after that, the brilliance of doing it with street art. And taking street artists who worked the night through, because I was there, were there. Thomas Bowen was there, stand-ups Thomas, because Thomas Bowen, Reverend Bowen is our dear friend. And, um, was there gathering all. And, um, it was brilliant because it gave, uh, it let everybody know that our streets were our streets and that lives mattered and black lives mattered. And, uh, it was, uh, it was having the courage, uh, to let people know that. Uh, Tom, you're, uh, you're about to take on a, uh, a really easy job. You know, just hardly any contentious things there going on. Um, and I know that, you know, you've, uh, cause we've talked about this and I, I've been really impressed. Uh, you know, uh, you are a person, whether it is for a, uh, as under Secretary of State or when you were running things, you are one of the best listeners. Uh, uh, and I know that, uh, John Shulman, last man standing, as I call him. Uh, and all of us who are friends of yours are, uh, you're incredibly supportive and you're listening and you have this way of, of doing this. What is it that, um, what really motivates you in terms of, cause you know, uh, listen, you know, most people would tell you, take it on, uh, to be the US ambassador at this particular time to the state of Israel. Um, you know, it's a kamikaze mission in some ways, right? You know, because there's, uh, it's, it's an incredibly contentious time. Uh, but it's also an incredibly hopeful time because we have a whole new government there. We have a whole new set of opportunities. You just welcomed Lapeed there. We just had, uh, the anniversary of the Accords, uh, which I just have published an article that'll come out in our journal, uh, that those Accords, although 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue would like to take credit for those, those Accords started with the vision of Sheikh Zayed, uh, 10 years before. And you have the wisdom of knowing that that's a region that has its own culture and pace and everything.
Well, it's a, um, it's a complicated question. I think, uh, I think I'll have to say that one thing about doing something, as, as the mayor knows, you, you have to, um, I know this is gonna sound pedantic, but you have to want to do the right thing. I mean, I'm not an ideologue. Listen, I am a liberal Democrat, obviously. I spent a lot of time both in campaigns and I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of my, um, involvement. But Israel is not a partisan issue. You know, one thing I have been really fortunate, I've had opportunities to spend a lot of time on Capitol Hill before the processes, for those of you don't know, you get dominated by the president and then you have to get a hearing in the, in the Senate. Uh, Ambassador Bernstein, who, uh, was our ambassador to Denmark, he knows this process quite well. You have to go up and you have to meet with people. Uh, it just happens to be that Israel seems to be quite, uh, on everyone's top 10 list. And so everyone wants to meet with you and all the Republicans and all the Democrats, and everyone loves Israel. Some people love Israel in different ways. Uh, and some people believe that Israel can do better. But generally people, the vast, vast majority of Democrats and Republicans, love the state of Israel. And so you as an, as an ambassador of the United States, need to nurture that. You need to push it, you need to, you need to foster it. And if you don't have an ideologue, if you're not ideologically bent and you just want to do the right thing, you believe in my North Star is a democratic Jewish state, okay? That is a North Star of mine. I fundamentally believe to do that, you have to keep the least, the dream of the hope of a two-state solution alive, to keep that light of a democratic Jewish state bright and shiny, okay? So the good thing is, I think for, for Israel, for Jews, for non-Jews, uh, President Biden, uh, also believes in that. He's a, you know, he calls himself a Zionist. He calls himself a grand supporter of the state of Israel. So, so I, you know, I come as it will come, if I'm fortunate enough to get confirmed as a representative of his, not of my own ideology. But I, you know, my hope is in a small sort of way and, and a way to bring the communities together, be it the ultra-orthodox, um, or the Peace Now people and everyone in between. I just, you know, again, I know it sounds silly and immature, immature a little bit, but I really do want to do the right thing. And I think with guidance from people like yourself and people who understand the region and people come and want to figure out how we move ourselves forward in this process, um, I think will be, um, you could have some, a lot of, of success. There is no question, London would have been a much nicer house. Uh, it'd have been, uh, but nonetheless, um, I do think, uh, it is a challenge worth having. And I, the only real regret is, I just wish my father and my mother were alive. Cause I think they would, I think they would think it was really cool. And, um, and, and my sister and, you know, my son, uh, Max and my daughter Taylor, again, you guys better be watching this right now. Uh, that, uh, you know, I just, I can't wait for them to come. They, they both were bar, bar mitzvah there. They've both been there multiple times, my wife has been there. But I just, to, to come and, and, you know, you just listen, I, you know, I'm lucky. I mean, I could be a little schlubby kid back in Duluth. I, you know, I mean, only by the grace of whatever God there is to, that I got, I'm, I'm fortunate. I came to the city, I've had a really good run, I've had a lot of fun, it's, things have worked out. And now I'm gonna go and become the ambassador.
So this is, this, he says, the guy who got Walter Mondale to come to his high school to be a speaker at his high school graduation? And then somehow ends up working for Walter Mondale here.
Okay, wait, wait, can I just say, I went, there's another, there's another member of your congregation and I, I hope he's watching this too. There's a guy named Mike Berman, who, he worked for Walter Mondale, he was his general counsel. And this is literally 45 years ago. And I woke up one day and I was given the task of finding a commencement speaker for my high school. And I really wanted Bob Dylan, uh, but unfortunately, Bob Dylan's from Minnesota, but he was unavailable for some reason. So I bugged this guy, Mike Berman, every single day. I mean, I used to call him at 4:03 in the morning, he'd answer his own phone in the vice president's office in, at the White House. And, and he's from Duluth too. And I said, your, your father owned the girl, uh, the, uh, the lawn, the dry cleaner. Michael, you gotta pull this off, you gotta get the, the, the vice president. Anyways, he got Walter Mondale to my high school. And then he gave me an internship to go to the White House. And Mike Berman is my dear, dear friend. He's the godparents of my kids. I talk to him every day. And if you're watching, I love you, Michael, thank you for taking care of me.
Well, so, uh, so you know, this, the, how do you do exactly? And for you, Tom, and for you, Mayor, um, how do you handle the challenges as a leader when you have to have the dissidents and know that, uh, your faith has got to fortify you? But, uh, you, you're, you know, there is a separation of church and state. There is this thing that, that you put service to others above even yourself. And both of you are doing that because I, I know, uh, Tom, you could organize and you've done for, you know, you've rebuilt places in Europe. You've done your economic fortitude and your ability to structure things. You've done incredible things, uh, in Europe and, uh, during the, uh, the Obama administration. And I, I'm so glad that you're gonna bring those acuities because, um, I do believe that economic prosperity is going to change the look of the Middle East and, and change things of that nature. But how do you both deal with that of having the dissidents to be able to be, uh, to, to have this sense of service and service above your own needs?
Well, let me, let me just say Rabbi, that I don't, I don't know that I see it as a dissidence, but as I have a, I have a job to do over here in one respect. And I can't do my job as well, um, without the support of the faith community. I can't do my job as well as I otherwise could without helping to strengthen the faith community, um, in a lot of ways. And I think that's one way to, to think about it. And I actually think in a city and sitting in the seat, um, that I have, it is, that job has changed because the faith community in Washington DC is changing. Our city is changing. Um, we have, we have grown substantially. We're now 700,000 people. We have people living and working and dining and, and playing in places just 10 years ago that didn't exist. Housing that didn't exist, entertainment opportunities that didn't exist. Uh, we have become, we're attracting younger residents in our city, many of whom are unattached, um, to a faith community. Uh, we are seeing people who have been long attached to a faith community go on to glory or move out of DC or, and in, or replaced by people who may not be attached to a faith community. We've lost faith communities in our city. Um, faith communities that have moved or have downsized. All kinds of things, uh, have happened between how the state, in this case, uh, our city, uh, interacts with the faith community. So I, I took on a, a view, and I hope you've seen this as a member of the Interfaith Council, um, that yes, I'm gonna leave all of the, um, ministering to souls to the people who know how to minister to souls when it comes to spirituality. But I still need you in the game, I'm gonna borrow Tom's statement, uh, on so many things that affect how we live together and our, our joint humanity as Washingtonians. So I asked the faith community, for example, to help us with our charge for affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Because as it turns out, the faith community has a lot of land. And has, um, land that they really need to rethink how to best use and to use at its highest and best use. So we, we wanna, we wanna work with you on that. Uh, we're, we've always leaned on the faith community when it comes to, um, violence in our, in our communities. Cause the faith community can talk about values and character and family in a way that the, the state can't always, um, do. Um, so we rely on that. And in the last several years, every. And in the last several years, every issue of challenge to the community, and, and I will say that the Jewish community has been highly challenged in the last four or five years. When we looked at hate crimes in our community, for example, the number, the highest increase of hate crimes was anti-Semitic speech or acts in, you know, for about two years straight after we had seen declines. But when other communities are challenged, the LGBTQ community or Hispanic community, we have all seen the faith communities lock arms together. So I, rather than seeing it as a huge separation that I always had to, to mind, I saw it as an opportunity, my leadership as an opportunity to get the faith communities to work with us on issues that cross our face.
But I'll give an example, your creativity and your sense of equity, everybody said not in my backyard. Every time that we talked about dealing with either affordable housing or we deal with poverty or shelter, everybody said not in my backyard. Everybody says, oh, that's great, whatever, until you go to put something there. But right up the street, every ward has got its own shelter and you, because of your creativity, you said, we're going to do this and it's, there's going to be no exception. Everybody, there's going to be a shelter every place and everybody's there. And once you did that, you began to break through where nobody else has begun to break through of really making a difference, a substantial difference in taking care of people of our city. And it's not only that, but listen, as Mayor of the city, you have, you have no army, you have all these things and yet you have to contend with everything that the national government does, you have to contend with protecting all these other things and you have to deal with all these incredible things. And we have, because of who we are in DC, we have the largest collection of veterans coming to our town and both some who are, have terrible mental illness and other things and you've dealt with all of those things. Tell us a little bit about the success because we've been proud to be partners with, of right up the street, but you solved this by just saying to us at the mayor's, you came in, I was there at the meeting of the, the Interfaith Council and said, yeah, there's going to be a shelter and there's going to be one in every ward.
Yep. Well, thank you for that. So Rabbi, you will remember, some people will remember a child named Rilisha Rudd. And we, we still don't know where Rilisha is. And she was living in an emergency family shelter that was an old hospital, DC General Hospital. And I just knew, even when I was running for mayor and I would become mayor, I would do everything in my power to prevent us losing another child in that way. And I knew and I had assembled just an outstanding team of people to help with the strategy, that if we built smaller, more dignified shelter, that we could help people exactly where they were in their emergency and help them to a life of sustainability. I also knew as a former ward council member, ANC Commissioner, that no matter how good the idea was, no matter how well people believed in the idea, that it would be scary to say that we're going to build homeless shelter, a homeless shelter in your neighborhood. And I knew that people would fight it. I knew that we had to have a, just a, a solid plan. And the solid plan was homelessness is the city's problem, it's not one ward's problem. So every part of the city is going to be a part of the solution. And that's what we did. We proposed short-term family housing, one, 50 units, not 400 units, beautiful housing that fits into every neighborhood. So we made a substantial investment, outstanding case management in every case so that people could deal with their emergency and people, no matter what, have emergencies and we're always going to need short-term family housing. And we could do it, do it that way. So we will open the last one and I think at the end of, shortly, at the end of this year in Ward One. So we would have opened all and all will be operating. And best of all, we have experienced a 70% decrease in the incidence of family homelessness in, in DC. So it's working, it works. And, and that's been tremendous. But there will be other opportunities like that, Rabbi.
I'm sure.
Because we have other populations, we're dealing with a, right now, an encampment issue that we also have a solution for, but it's going to need us to stand together, both people in the government, people in communities and the advocate community. We need them to also work with us on protocols that are going to get people to a more sustainable housing situation.
Well, I know and it's there, you also give the leeway. I know that the Metropolitan Police Department in the 7th District and we, through a friend of ours, Mark Newman, a member of our congregation, we work with in Ward Eight, give 600 Ward Eight DC public children whom experience homelessness and violence. They have an amazing holiday celebration because of the Metropolitan Police Department, because of the volunteers, because of the panoramic room of our Lady Lord Perpetual, which is the Catholic Church and Catholic charities. But I want you to know that there's six to 800 children every holiday that come and have the most incredible holiday experience. And it's, and it's great. And every child receives, I had the boys got football helmets and footballs and basketballs and whatever. And a member of our congregation heard about that and has been funding the toys so that children would not go without, that they'd all get the same and everybody be and not have to depend on that. But the police department on their own are doing this, they're doing, they're feeding, they're doing, the Marines that come from, is it barracks one, come and do that. It is this incredible cooperation because, and these are the untold stories of good and faith in action that so little people really know about, about our city. And, and Tom, you know, what I think is the great opportunity that you have and is a great opportunity, and I've heard it from you in that, is, is that, you know, you've said to me that everybody gives, needs a chance to be heard and to feel, feel affirmed and to be listened to and stood up for. And that, you know, you said, I'm not the ambassador for the reform movement, I'm not the ambassador for Washington here, I'm not the ambassador, but I'm the United States, I represent the United States and the, the understanding of that, that sense of democracy that you can instill. How do you, how do you, to make some of that stuff real?
Well, you know, it's, I want to just, I want to come back to one thing that the mayor said about the community and you said about the community. I, I happen to be fortunate enough to live in Georgetown and across the street is the Mount Zion Church. The Mount Zion Church is the oldest black church in Washington. It was, I think that the church was built only a few years after the house I happen to be living in was built. And the house I live in was a house that was a slave house, three slave houses were put together. It's an unbelievable historical house, beautiful place, and we were fortunate enough to move it a couple of years ago. And I've sort of kind of adopted the church and I've gotten to know the, the pastor at the church. And we do the homeless every Saturday at the church. And the church is sadly.
He and I have been talking about your donations, so don't worry.
Yeah, they got more than you have yet. But, but they need it more than you do. But the, but the, the community has rallied around the, the feeding programs on Saturdays in Georgetown. And you know, the, you know, the black community has dwindled dramatically in Georgetown and sadly, the church's population has dwindled. They only have probably 60 or 70 families left at the church. But the backbone of the community is that church, it's that place, it's that location. And, you know, we're all doing everything we can to keep the church alive and, and there's three or four, I think, I don't know how many black churches are left in Georgetown, but not more than four or five churches at most. And, but the programs, the feeding programs that they're doing there are, the community's getting involved and doing what they need to do, but the program sadly is not big enough because, again, the needs are so dramatic, even in the city of a lot of money, that the feeding and the homeless programs obviously continue to be the driver of what these communities need to step up and do. On your question around, listen, you know, because people feel so passionately about Israel, you don't have a choice. You have to, I mean, at least I, that's the only way I govern, okay? Listen, again, I said this before, I govern from a, from a place of just wanting to get stuff done, okay? I don't, I could, listen, I could make a bunch of statements, I could make a bunch of stupid speeches, I could get my name in the newspaper, I'm sure, and probably get myself fired. But I think it is, even before I get confirmed, but I, I just ultimately, I want everyone's voices to be heard, even if I disagree with them. There are some people I have talked to in the last three months that I cannot believe I've talked to, okay? But ultimately, they all have a very passionate desire to do something. And I'm sure the mayor faces this every day. She has people in her office every day, she probably wants to, well, not in her office now, but hopefully to throttle them, right? Because, but their interests are totally different what, what her necessarily, her beliefs are, but understands they want to be heard. And I fundamentally believe people want to be heard. I don't need necessarily agree with them, but I will be decent enough to make sure that they're heard. That is the only way we can move as a country and as a society to get things done.
Listen, from a kid from Duluth, a kid from Nashville, a, a woman who grew up in the DC, which is, you know, for the longest time, people of color unfortunately were made to feel as the other. So we all share a, a bit of a, from a different perspective, a commonality of this sense. There is, the Bible tells us more than any other statement, it reminds us that we were strangers in the land of Egypt, that, that we were strangers in the land of Egypt. And so we have to understand that experience of what it is to be the other. We have to understand that experience of the child who, you know, is in the, in, in Ward Eight or who's in, over near Alabama Avenue where our cemetery has been for over a century, when, when, you know, we have, we have deep roots in this community. And the deep roots are also an understanding of a time and a place. Look, we had to, we are the only congregation in the United States that was created by an act of Congress. That is not for the prestige, that is because that's the only way we could get land. Because Jews weren't going to be able to get land unless, from, unless it was an act of Congress. Now, in that same place, we have been honored to have presidents stand at this pulpit. And we've been honored to be, we've been in this congregation, in this community for 172 years, 170 years coming up, 1852, we were founded. But even before that, we were meeting in homes in the District of Columbia. We are vested in this town. And because this town and this congregation understands that Washington is a different city, it is our nation's capital, what happens here matters. And I want to thank the both of you because what you do, based on your faith and what you do for our, the common will, it matters. It really matters. And I am so humbled because, listen, I faced 3,000 Jewish families. I think, you think I got service, you got a whole city, you got a whole nation of Jews you're going to have to deal with. But the reality is, I'm humbled because both of you have this incredible sense of service and you do it with grace, you do it with integrity. And what I'm most proud of is to know two people who their internal compass about faith of what is right and what is good doesn't get altered by the public's desire or by what is fashionable or by what may be easy. You choose to do what is right. We, in our things, we say, le shana tova, v'garmar chati mat tova. We don't say have a sweet year, we don't say have a happy year, we say have a, a good year. I'm proud because both of you seek goodness. And Tom, I wish you the best of luck in both confirmation, but more that when you take that post, I know your parents will be incredibly proud. Because every time you serve, you don't serve for what you want, you serve for the generations that came before you, for all those times that your dad peddled whatever he did to give you the education and the opportunities, for your sisters and brothers, both here and gone, who, who believe in you. I know you will make us proud, Virginia proud and the kids proud because that's just who you are. And Mayor, it has been an incredible honor. I, I traveled with you to Israel and I, I learned a, a different side of you. And first of all, this is a fun lady. And this is a smart lady. And this is a person who, when somebody showed up and wanted her, you know, all of a sudden the bigwigs from the government showed up and tried to, to coax a statement or do this or whatever, she had the integrity and leaned over and asked a couple, said, what is the decent thing and what is the most respectful thing that we could do on the Temple Mount? What is the thing that we honor tradition that, that if I'm going to step in a place, I want to step in a place with integrity and with respect? And that is our mayor who made the first pilgrimage to Israel. She was the keynote speaker, which you never hear about these things on cybersecurity and facing. And she left that and went and stood and visited a hospital and was almost in tears when she realized that the, we went down to a place and there was a place set up in a parking lot. What was it? Because that place was going to become the emergency shelter when all else, if, if the hospital had to go underground, a parking lot, set of rooms was going to become an operating room. Because like the mayor, and this was, is that the job needed to be done, no matter what was going on above ground or outside. So your fortitude and the way you have taught us, and I'm honored to serve on your community, I'm honored to share with people like Reverend Bowen, to be a faith leader of people who, you have an army. You have an army of people who believe in you and they believe in you because you always stand up and choose to do the right thing. So to the two of you, I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi.
We're gonna, I want to thank the mayor and Tom Nides for participating. I think the screen is going to drop down. We're going to have Ambassador Bernstein is here, we want to thank him. My good friend Mark Newman is here and David Metzner, who do so much good work in the city as well. And I want to thank you for being with us. There are going to be another program that's going to follow, the screen is going to drop and you're going to have the opportunity to see some other ones. Thank you so much. You guys were awesome. Thank you. Listen.